My question first. The analysis that I prepared requires that homes not only be nearby, but they also have sold recently. And so while there are homes, more homes than in my sample, that are located in proximity to a regulator station, unless they have sold, there would be nothing to compare them to. There'd be no way to contrast their selling price to another. Secondly, the homes that I used in my analysis were, on average, nearer to, closer to the regulator station than is the case along the Holmdel Road corridor, and some were very near, 500 feet in distance.
Okay, so you're saying that it was a small sample because you only had a couple of houses, there were a small number that had sold. So it's really just based on that and not any kind of scientific analysis?
That's not true. It absolutely is based upon an empirical analysis of actual home sales and therefore scientific analysis as described in my report.
France E. campus, Two Countries Square Lane, and I think I could follow up on that because you mentioned doing an analysis of houses that sold.
A lot of friends, eh?
On houses that sold, but in your report doesn't include how long that house was up for sale before it was sold. Because we know you could sell a house, but some people could put it up and it could take two years to sell because they've got something wrong with the area they're in, as opposed to somebody that can sell their house in a month. And we know that because, as I mentioned before, do you agree in location?
Yeah, first of all, houses that take longer to sell generally sell at some deep discount. And in this case, if in fact there was a discount as for homes near to a regulator station, because they took longer to sell, the results of this analysis would have been very different. This analysis shows that there is not a discount. And we also found that there was not any significant difference in market.
You did look at that, how long it took to sell that?
Yes.
Okay.
Days on.
And my other thing, which you mentioned when you talked about commercial value, had to do with the rents that you could get for a property would dictate the value. Is it not that improved farmland that now has a business on it increases the value of that land and that this regulator station could impact that? Because quite honestly, they erected a wonderful winery there, and if they want to sell that winery later on, a prospective buyer is a true may not want to buy it if there's that across the street as opposed to it now.
So I'll try to unpack that because there are a couple of questions that were inside of what you asked. First, physical building improvements on farmland has a de minimis effect on the value of that property. It has a very limited effect on that property because those improvements tend to be very specialized to whatever, whichever agricultural activity is occurring on that site. Secondly, your second question, which was a broader question as to whether in fact the installation of this regulator site would have an adverse effect on the ability of that agricultural property to operate, absent any environmental issues, it would have no effect.
Right, but you're just talking environmental. I'm talking about other things that might impact a buyer wanting to buy it. I could tell you that other things would affect it.
I disagree with that.
Okay. And would you tell me the 25 acres of sandy soil that you could do nothing with that would have designated farmland would have the same value as fertile farmland?
There can be some differences from one farmland tract to another, but irrespective of that, land which is restricted to agricultural or green acres use has had the majority of its value already stripped away by virtue of those deep restrictions.
Okay. Do you agree that the public farmland and open space in the community has some intrinsic value to have people want to move to that community and therefore keep the value of those farms up?
But your question presupposes that the installation of the regulator station would erase that open space across the street and it will not eliminate it. It will continue to exist.
About a ton?
Your four minutes. And I have another lady behind you who has quite.
Okay, can I just state one more question and post to everybody? Would you want a regulator like that?
That's not, that's not a question.
Hi, Janet Nisi. This is Latimer?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. N-I-C-I, Seven Countries Square Lane. Sure, getting back to what Mr. Gilstein said about statistically significant sample size, can you just repeat what you said about the number of houses you compared? Because I was in the back, I thought it was an incredibly small number of houses that you were comparing.
My investigation compared both what we call target properties and control properties. The targets being homes which sold which were near to a regulator station and the control properties being properties which sold at some distance from a regulator station. The target properties, the homes that sold which were near to a regulator station totaled 10 properties and the control group totaled 16.
Do you think that's a statistically valid sample to use to make the statements that you made, that where you said unequivocally, there's no difference? I may not be an expert witness in real estate, but I would be an expert witness in statistics. Yes, okay. Do you consider that a statistically valid statement, if you may? Do you consider it a statistic?
No, I heard, I heard.
Do you consider it a sample size?
I heard it.
I'm just rephrasing it so that it's clearer for you. It was clear in the first one, sorry.
I'm pausing not because I didn't understand your question, I'm pausing because I want to give you a thoughtful answer. The answer is yes. It is sufficient, adequate, and reliable. Most valuations that involve real estate property typically include somewhere between three and four comparisons to a single subject property. This is accomplishing that times six. This is far more elaborate and comprehensive and considerate than would typically be incorporated into evaluation.
Excuse me, but with assessments, I think you're talking about assessments. I was under the impression that usually you use a one-year period when you use those three, three to five comps, and that you looked at a five-year period and you use 10. So to me, that is less than, I would think that you would consider that less than adequate because you're looking at a five-year period and only 10 homes? Yes. Are you still standing by your statement that it is significant even though you use five years and have 10 homes?
I think you've misunderstood my testimony. And I'll start with saying that you made a reference to the assessment, which is, assessment normally refers to assessed values on properties and my analysis is not predicated upon assessments, but rather based upon selling prices being the indication of value. So my research and investigation covered a five-year retrospective period in order to identify sales of homes near to regulator stations over a five-year period. Once having identified individual sales that occurred within that five-year period, the control properties that were compared to each of those sales within five years occurred very near in time, in most cases within months, in all cases within a year's time.
All right, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Sanders. You're at four, hit.
Okay, it's one question, and it says one question, so let me just say that's right to the leader. It was based on Gina Cristiano. I was going to ask something similar, but I'm not an expert at all, so it may be a stupid, naive question. But you mentioned this one, what I consider big system that's above ground, is a proposal. Did your company look at the possibility of having multiple below-ground systems? I understand that it could possibly be that it would be an increased cost operationally, but is it, did your company look at, let's say, do we have one additional underground system, two additional underground systems? What exactly were the costs and how much differential were they as opposed to one large system?
Yeah, this is similar to the other question about multiple pressure drops. But multiples, adding more, just as an engineering rule, adding more things to do the same thing that one thing can do is not going to be the most effective way or cost-effective way for our customers to provide service to our customers.
Right, I understand it would be more cost, but sometimes when you, I would assume that when you do an analysis, something might be a little bit more costly and yet the, there are other extenuating factors that might make that a better solution. So I was just wondering if your company did that analysis, what if we had two, what if we had three, or whatever the appropriate number would be? I'm just saying that because I.
Just want to let me answer the question?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to just restate the statement that I mentioned before is that good engineering practice is always not about just the monetary cost, there's other costs that are involved. And again, the addition of assets to the company are reflected by our customer base that roll into the customer experience. There's a maintenance cost, there's a total cost of ownership, so the more things we have to maintain, the more chance you have for issues and failures and additional costs. So it's the idea that we want to minimize the upfront cost and the total cost, but provide a better benefit for our customers, so.
No, you're done.
Yeah, right. But that didn't answer the question. That's giving a, that's giving an answer, but didn't say, did you do it or not?
You're at seven and a half minutes, and I've got to give the other people.
All right, so the answer is, I don't have an answer to my question, that's all.
That can be an answer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so it's ten oh four, and because I want to finish with Mr. Otto and Mr. Sanders, so we don't have to hear from them again, I'm going to give another opportunity if people haven't had a chance to finish asking different questions, because I don't think everyone listens to the questions that came before and you're kind of repeating questions that other people would ask. If anyone has different questions that they want to ask, then we'll stay and we'll finish it off. Man in the back, you haven't had a chance to ask any questions.
Sue Quinn Cannon, Hopbrook Lane, Holmdel. And I'd like to ask the real estate gentleman a question. When you did your study, did you look at the various prices of homes? When I look at this contraption that they want to put down the street, it looks like something that would belong on the turnpike, as I said before. Now, the houses on Hopbrook Lane range anywhere from $2.5 to $3 million. I know if I was coming into that neighborhood and I was buying a house, I certainly would not like this industrial piece of equipment in my neighborhood. Now, I move to a rural area.
Is there a question there that you?
Yeah, my question is, have you done any studies on houses in this price range and selling them with this kind of industrial equipment? And we'll probably be in industrial zone after this.
Well, again, there's a lot to unpack there. There is nothing that has been testified yet which would indicate that this location will be turning into an industrial zone. That was the last part of this. There's no basis for that. Secondly, my investigation did look across a wide range of home selling prices and found that there was no measurable difference or distinction between the effects on modestly priced homes or higher priced homes. Thirdly, I'm sure it, I'm sure, let me rephrase that. Thirdly, based upon the testimony that we heard earlier on site engineering, on the landscape, on the noise, and on the emissions, the homes on Hopbrook Lane won't be able to see this, hear it, or hear it.
Smell it.
It's entirely enclosed in a very aggressive berm with sound protection measures which far exceeds any of the other stations that I looked into. It is further from the road, it is more heavily buffered, it is more heavily landscaped. And the general rule in housing at mass, where on Hopbrook Lane you live, which number?
I live on number 14.
Number 14. So what we can say with absolute certainty is that from your home, you won't be able to hear it, see it, or smell it. And those are the basic tests for effect on real estate values.
If I went out on my road and I see the site immediately.
You will not see it. What you will see will be very attractive evergreen landscaping, and from the road, it will look no different. You will not know what's behind that landscaping from the road. You will not be able to see it. You would need to be out on Holmdel Road in a boom lift elevated up into the sky to be able to see what's behind all of that. That's just the facts. We saw landscaping perspectives that showed that very clearly in terms of what would be visible from Holmdel Road.
Next question?
Gina Cristiano, 35, Ransland Brook Road. Did you say in your report, since I didn't get a copy, what time of year the houses sold or went under contract so that we can figure out if people decided on, I didn't say, if people decided on a price at the time that the regulator smelled the worst and made more sound?
The dates of all of the sales are included in my report.
I just want to correct the recording, both testimony and record of smelling.
Okay, that is true, that is true, but I went to the one in Lynn Croft and I did smell it.
We're not talking about that regulator station, we're talking about the one here that's proposed in Holmdel.
Yes, okay.
You can answer the question, Mr. Otto.
Yeah, all of those dates appear in my report.
Mr. Otto, you made a statement that you wouldn't see it, smell it, and everything. I could be wrong, but for both of you, Mr. Sanders, I thought that in the winter, under certain humidity conditions or something from the heat coming out of this, just like the heat coming out of my super-high efficiency furnaces, you would see steam, some, whatever you would call it, steam or some sort of moisture plume. I thought that is the testimony.
It's Mr. Sanders, Mr. Sanders.
But he just made a statement you would never see anything.
And I, well, I want to have Mr. Sanders testify on that, so.
Because my furnace is 97% efficient, you can see it coming out of the PCV pipe in the winter.
I think I testified to this at the last hearing about billowing white steam coming out of it. You will not have that out of the vent stack. What you may see is, you know, maybe a product of just the difference in temperature that's coming out, but you will not see white billowing smoke at any of our locations.
I wasn't insinuating white billowing smoke like we used to see on the turnpike. I was saying, as this woman comes out of her $2.7 million house and drives down, she will likely see on certain days in the winter, something in the air coming through those, up above the tree line. I think the question, I think, Mr. Otto, your statement may be wrong. Do you agree your statement may have been wrong?
That's not a question.
I just wanted to make clear that you will see things on certain days.
Other questions? Yes. No, not Carol, you already went, thanks.
My question's better.
Leah Shave, 11 Ladwood Drive. My question's for Mr. Sanders. If I'm understanding, I'm sorry, S-H-A-V. So I, from what I understand, you had begun construction of replacing pipe in 2012 and you overbuilt in anticipation, and did you order the regulator and I guess vending unit at the same time concurrent?
I think we answered, we don't have that information tonight as to what date the heater. I think the question was the heater and when that was purchased, and we just don't, we don't have that date for you.
Leah, I don't know if you came in late, but someone else. No, I didn't, I did hear, but it's not that you were concurrent. Well, it was about the same time, I'm not actually aware of the actual date.
What I'm saying to you is, Mr. Sanders, I think you said that he doesn't know the date.
Okay, so, but then my, I guess my next question too is, so, until I get the order proper, and if you can clarify this, so you did build and expand the pipeline knowing that down the line you would have to build this regulator station at some point?
Yeah, I testified previously that it was, this is a two-phase project.
So my question then becomes, did you not, did you put the carton for the horse by not kind of taking care of every single stage of this in the planning process and asking for all of this project in its entirety? And if not, why did you not do it that way?
Yeah, that's a good question.
So now, why is Holmdel stuck with your problem?
Well, let me answer the question. As part of our engineering process, again, we're always looking for benefits for our customer base. So as we're improving the infrastructure, which is required by code for us to meet our integrity requirements, the regulator station is, was something that we started, the search in 2011 after the BPU approval. We were not successful, we were in negotiations for several years. And so, from an engineering standpoint, we also have a dual benefit here. We're replacing aged pipe, so we would not defer that installation in anticipation of some other later benefit for our customers. So our customers need an integral system, a quality system. We installed the pipe that meet that need as well. There's two parts. One is for infrastructure, also considering that once you increase the pressure, you're going to need to have the station. We would not avoid installing an asset where our customers could benefit at day one to wait until the regulator station is sighted. So it was in concurrence, they were working in parallel, it's just that the pipeline got approved prior to the site.
Can I just ask one more question, please? So what led you to believe that you needed to increase that volume, I guess, and I'm sorry, I'm not using technical terms, from 250 to 700? That seems like a huge leap. So were there any studies that were done consistent with Holmdel that just related to Holmdel that showed that you needed to increase it to that level?
Yeah, and again, this is previous testimony, and I just wanted, you know, respectfully just mention that, again, the pipeline itself is part of a system that we feed. The regulator itself is a takeoff, it's feeding directly to the customer base. So the pipeline itself is part of our overall system. And again, the benefit of 500,000 customers is something that we look at as part of the project so that all of our customers benefit to decouple those items, again, whether we stack them or take the sequence out of order, maybe, you know, we had sighted the regulator first or, and then the piping. The benefit is for the customers to get the new pipe, the better infrastructure, to more, to remove the vintage pipe from our system so that the customers can benefit at that point. So wasn't it an error in judgment, it's just being able to, in a sound engineering way, meet the needs of the customers as we're having, as we're having a problem getting in easily?
I, Carol, this to you.
Mr. Otto, I actually had a few follow-up questions. Thank you. So I wanted to know, just to be clear, in your paired sales summary, were there any sales of homes in the five-year period that you looked at that were near, within your target area, within your target area, that were left out of the equation for whatever reason? Didn't have a roof, it flooded? I'm just wondering, were there any sales of homes in the target area that were left out of your paired summary for any reason?
Yes.
Okay, can you expand upon that and why were they left out?
Sure. Multiple reasons. First of all, in order for a target sale, in order for a target sale to be included in this analysis, there needed to be simultaneous control sales of houses with very similar characteristics in the same town on or about the same date of sale. Because this, the analysis that you see here is not to quantify the selling prices of homes near to regulator stations, but rather to contrast those selling prices to control sales of, with similar qualities in the same town that sold around the same time. So yes, there were sales that occurred near to regulator stations for which there were not similar pairings available. Real estate markets are that way, they're not perfect.
About how many sales were eliminated from this summary because there wasn't a pairing or coupling of another home that was in your control?
I don't recall that.
Five, 10, 100?
I don't recall that. I'd be guessing.
Did you find a correlation? So as we get to the distance, I'm looking at your target group.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite finish my answer. There was a second part to your first question, if I may. There would be another reason why a sale would be excluded. And that exclusion would occur if the sale had occurred under some form of duress or distress. And so those are referred to as nonusable sales. And so if there's a home that sold as a passive, for instance, and it's sold at a share of sale as part of, as the conclusion of a bankruptcy or foreclosure action, those sales would have been pulled out as well.
Okay, thank you. And you don't have any idea ballpark as to how many sales were left out because they didn't have a similar home and a similar time?
I recall it being a relatively small number, but I don't remember how many of those there were.
Did you find a correlation, just even within the target group? Did you find a correlation, just even within the target group, in the distance from the site, the regulator station, and the actual sale price? In other words, as I look at your target group, the highest price, selling price that I see, by the way, is less than $1 million, and it is the farthest distance from that regulator station. As I go through your target group, in most cases, as I get closer to that regulator station, my price is significantly lower. Do you see that correlation?
I see your observation, it's not significant to this analysis, however, because this analysis, my, my, my study is not determining the average or median or typical selling price of homes that are near to regulator stations. That's not the point of this. The point of this is to understand how those selling prices for nearby homes compares to the selling price of similar homes at greater distance away.
That only happened within a similar period of time or similar-
That's right.
So you keep shrinking, that those numbers are shrinking. Okay, but, but there is a correlation in your numbers between actual distance from a regular, regulator station and the selling price. Yes or no? Not whether that was your task, not, I'm just asking, is there a correlation between the actual distance from a regulator station to the selling price of a home?
There is some correlation there, yes.
Some?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not absolute.
Okay. I look at your, three of your four highest sold homes, again, all of which are below $1 million, and those are the three of the four farthest away. So I actually, and as I get closer to that regulator station, I get significant drops in the pricing. So I'm just making a point, that the houses that are closest to regulator stations sell for less money.
And I'd like to respond to that. Real estate analysis is complex, and sometimes what we think we're seeing is not what we're seeing. And so clearly, what you're observing here is not a correlation between value and proximity. What you're observing here is the lower-priced home sales are on teeny-tiny lots, which means that those houses are closer and closer to the station. As you move up into higher price points, where lot sizes are an acre or two or three, of course, a home that's sold two doors away from the station is going to be thousands of feet in distance rather than hundreds, because low-priced houses are built on smaller lots and higher densities. So what you're seeing there is an inconsequential correlation.
Okay, thank you. My next question, I just take note there, you had mentioned that high-priced, you had made a statement about high-priced homes earlier, that, I don't know what you consider a high-priced home, but the neighborhood that is nearby this regulator station is a new construction home. Most homes sell for over $1 million, I would believe. You do not have one target group home that sold for more than $1 million. So how relevant then is this study if it's not equivalent to the neighborhood in question?
First, I'll give the answer, and then the reasons for that answer. It is valid, in my view, that's my testimony, because we look at homes here that are selling anywhere from several hundred thousand to approaching $1 million, and there's no deviation here in terms of the correlations from less expensive homes to more expensive homes. Similarly, there's no deviation from closer proximities or further proximities as it relates to the target group. Thirdly, none of this can be, can be viewed in a vacuum, right? It's not reasonable to look at this in an absolute vacuum and say, well, we're in a neighborhood here where something is going to be introduced that you can't see and you can't hear. Those are facts that we heard in all your testimony, and yet, in that same neighborhood, directly across the street from Hopbrook, there's a solar farm, there's a rather tall cellular tower in effect, there's office buildings at both ends with traffic. And what your premise is suggesting is that none of those things matter, but a regulator station that you can't see and you can't hear and you can't smell is somehow going to upset the applecart for property values in this neighborhood on its face? That's an unreasonable premise.
Okay, I'm done. Do you believe that perception can affect markets regardless of fact?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just Carol?
Yeah, it's just three questions.
Okay, so I'm going to give you a really short, just because it's 10:30 now, and we've been on this for three and a half hours, so.
No, yes?
Yeah, you can have a couple minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Give you a short outline for your-
Oh, thank you. I have three questions, and I don't know who to close them to, so I'll let the board decide who should answer them, okay?
Yeah, yeah, could you just run through them quick enough?
Yes, exactly. You referred to controlling standards for emissions, okay?
Pardon me?
Controlling standards for emissions have been mentioned quite often in testimony.
That's probably the air quality, air quality.
Okay, that would be specific, so you prepare to answer it next time around, okay?
I'm not going to write it down, but if you, you can ask the question at that time.
Okay, I want to know this, the ruling, the controlling statute, rule, regulation for the controlling standards for emissions, okay? I also want to know in OL2 zone, which has been mentioned quite often, the word "commercial", I want to know where "commercial" appears in the OL2 zoning.
I'm going to have, my planner hasn't even testified yet, but that's an appropriate area of testimony for the planner who will testify, and so that is it for tonight.
Okay, and also, Dimitri had mentioned at last meeting, he wanted kind of like a history of how the piping went into Holmdel Road.
Yes, where is-
Which I think he requested, if I remember, according to my notes, he requested he would like to see the history and the permitting procedure for the piping in Holmdel Road.
Mr. Sanders can provide an overview of that.
Okay, that'd be great. The dates and installation and that type of thing?
I think he already gave the date of the installation, but we can certainly-
And who did the permits for it, I mean-
That was a question that was asked, who did the permits?
I'm sorry, I thought that was part of it.
Did you ask Dimitri, who had handed the permits for this at the first question? I remember, I actually saw the book out of the transcript, I mean, you can agree with me, I disagree with you, but there was a question, what was the process? You asked, when was it installed? You asked, was the town noticed? And you also asked, was there any notification as to the requirement of a regulator station?
I thought he also asked as well if there were any boards involved, like, didn't you mention boards as well, Dimitri, as far as-
I guess, why wasn't this provided since he requested it?
Okay, this is my minute, sorry. I'm pretty sure Dimitri had mentioned as well, what board did this go through to get approved?
He didn't mean to, but let's let Mr. Sanders answer the question.
Let's say I didn't ask, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
We'll hear the answer.
Those are your questions? Yes, done.
Who me?
Yeah, Mr. Sanders will respond.
Okay, good.
I think I answered one of these questions before, which is the permitting process for the pipeline. In 2011, we received BPU approval for the transmission line. As part of that process, all municipalities that are affected are notified for the pipeline installation and invited to participate in the review process. Holmdel was notified in 2011 for the installation of the pipeline itself. Secondly, as part of the construction, we requested and received construction permits, road open permits from the town of Holmdel as well. The regulator station, again, as I mentioned, to-